As well as on the county board's website. There is also an automatic external debibulator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, I am going to ask for a moment of silence. This past week, we actually lost two county employees. Ellen Condon from our Department of Corrections and Michael Woods from our County Engineers Department. And so if you would, please think of their families, their friends, and coworkers in all of Douglas County who lost two very exceptional employees. Thank you. With that, we will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Avenoff. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the two resolutions, item D and E, and adjourn if everyone is okay with that.
Will you approve or adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, the citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. And you have before you my report for the month of November.
Every now and then this cuts out. So we'll just have to turn the video back on. There you go.
Thank you. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. After the fourth month of the fiscal year, I'm pleased to report that we are over $1 million under budget as of right now, $1,065,586 to be exact. There was $334,899 spent on overtime during November. That's a decrease of about $46,000 from the previous month, which continues a downward trend over the previous few months. We have implemented some temporary measures to reduce, some temporary practices in order to reduce the amount of overtime, and we have greatly reduced the amount of mandatory Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. Twenty-four-seven sobriety program admitted 62 individuals. There were 3,260 breath tests conducted. Eight were positive for alcohol use. There were 10 no-shows, and the overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.9%. Fifty-eight individuals were monitored for a total of 1,303 days of SCRAM monitoring. We had no no-shows. There was one tampering violation and one alcohol violation. The SCRAM compliance rate was 99.9%. There were 847 drug tests administered with 160 violations. And again, due to supply chain issues for the second month in a row, many of our drug tests were done during, using urinalysis rather than the usual saliva test that we use in this program. Sixteen drug testing patches were submitted for testing with two violations. Work release admitted 24 individuals. That's an increase. House arrest admitted 70 individuals. That's also an increase from the previous month. Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 28 individuals. Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities admitted 56 individuals and two individuals achieved GED. Pretrial Services continues to provide regular information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. There were 10 individuals referred for priority prosecution, which saved a combined 273 bed days. 200 individuals were placed on pretrial release in the month. And over the course of the month, 1,283 individuals were managed on pretrial release with a 90% compliance rate. There were 18 individuals who visited the law library, and there was significant progress made in preparation for our enhanced pretrial release program that is currently in its planning phase. We anticipate our new pretrial program will launch on April 1st of next year. And I want to take a couple minutes just to give an overview of what we have planned for that program, because I do believe there's some ARPA funds that are on the agenda today allocated towards the improvement of what we do. We've been working with stakeholders for probably a year now, and by stakeholders, I'm referring to the county attorney, the public defender, city prosecutor, presiding judges of county and district court. Commissioner Rogers also sits on this committee, as well as several members of my staff, to develop a program that will have the ability to successfully manage some individuals who currently spend their whole pretrial status, in other words, not yet convicted, in jail, manage them with resources, both supervision and supportive resources, to manage them safely in the community. Our percentage of individuals who are incarcerated, who have not yet been convicted, is well over 80%. If you do the math, we typically average around 1,200 people in custody as a ballpark average. That means we're 900 to 1,000 people are typically incarcerated on a pretrial status. Some of those folks need to be incarcerated on a pretrial status. There is a subset of those people, however, that we believe that we can manage safely in the community. They have, there are enough assets, personal assets, social assets, and employment assets that those people have, that we can assist them in a variety of ways of keeping on track during their, until they await their day in court. The goal is, there are many goals. One of the goals is to reduce the jail population. The fewer people that we have in custody, the better off we are as far as COVID goes in being able to, in a very difficult environment to socially distance, it does give us a little more space to work with. The other thing is, I believe that this actually will make the community safer. Individuals who are incarcerated for months on end awaiting for trial end up losing anything that is positive in their life, any momentum that's in their life. They may lose their, they'll likely have lost their employment. They probably will have lost their residence. They may have, you may end up with kids in foster care. You know, all these things can happen when an individual who could have been managed in another setting spends that time incarcerated. So our plan is to develop an array of services. A lot of it is using the tools that are already in our toolbox, but also some additional tools, and package it under the umbrella of pretrial release services, meaning anything from the 24/7 program with its very stringent drug and alcohol monitoring and seeing people sometimes twice a day, depending on what protocols they're on, to using GPS monitoring to manage folks and communicate their whereabouts to law enforcement if needed, to using some of, excuse me, using some of the services that are already available in our Community Corrections building and opening those up to people on a pretrial status. In addition, we are hoping, in addition, what a lot of these funds are going to go towards is staff positions who will be supervising kind of a, they're probably 50% probation officer, 50% social worker, and they're going to be individuals who monitor individuals who are on pretrial release and arrange for their services, communicate with the courts. As you may recall, I've mentioned in previous board reports, we recently implemented a new pretrial release case management software program that the courts will have access to so they can see at any given time how the individual who they've placed on pretrial release is doing. I also want to be very clear that this is not a replacement for cash bail. The judges will continue to have the prerogative to set the bail amount at whatever they think is prudent. This is just to give them additional choices. Really, I would consider it a win, at least for operations of the jail. If we even got 5% or 10% of the individuals who are on a pretrial status out and supervised in the community, that would take a tremendous pressure off of the population density in the jail and reduce our costs. These ARPA funds may also be used for, some of the stakeholders have made it clear to me on both sides, the prosecution and the defense side, that some of our resources may need to be offered to people at no cost. Currently, basically, everybody who's on 24/7 pays fees. Everybody who's on house arrest pays fees. There may be people who are eligible for these conditions of release that don't have the financial means. It is still cheaper for us to offer those services at no cost to them rather than to pay for their incarceration at well over $100 a day. So I did want to kind of just give a broad overview. I'm happy to take questions about that now or at the conclusion of my.
The conclusion.
All right. Moving on to enclosure number three, Compliance. Our regular annual documentation is being collected for all compliance processes. Our annual performance standard measures report is being submitted to the American Correctional Association. As our ICE contract will come to an end in late January, we are beginning the process for planning, for operational and planning and policy alterations which will accompany this change. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Three officers left employment in November. One of these departures was a retirement. Nine new correctional officers began their training academy on November 29th. This, what we're grateful for, each and every one of them, is a smaller number than we anticipated a few weeks prior to the academy beginning. I want to congratulate Officer Terry Teal, who retired from service to DCDC in November. And there were 14 officers promoted from CO1 to CO2 in November. Enclosure number five, Population. There were 1,301 admissions in November. There were 1,339 releases, which is an increase. Our high count was 1,221. Our low count was 1,131. Our average daily population was 1,179, and that's a decrease of 11. And I want to also point out, that is also while the Marshals are systematically increasing their numbers with us, so despite the fact that per the terms of our new contract with the Marshals, we are allocating them more beds than we had been, our overall population has trended down. There were 99 custodial bed, custodial sanctioned bed days. That is a decrease. As I mentioned, the U.S. Marshal population increased, the ICE population decreased, the felony pretrial population decreased, and the misdemeanor pretrial population also decreased, and probation violations decreased. The female population decreased, but not to the point where we were able to only operate three female housing units. We continued to operate four, though we have, in the last few days, we've been able to decrease to three. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,102 intake screenings. There were 380 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 25 times for emergent medical care, and 11 of those were by 911. There were nine hospital admissions, which resulted in 30 days of hospitalization cumulatively. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 78 initial psychiatric assessments, seven initial mental health assessments. There were 80 mental health infirmary placements. There were 154 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were two referrals to the Board of Mental Health and two referrals to long-term We continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had two new cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population in November, and our staff cases also remain low. I feel pretty fortunate, given the rates that have been present in the community that we've been doing as well as we have been. Approximately 70% of our staff have been vaccinated, and as of December 1st, we had vaccinated 1,391 incarcerated individuals, including 68, which were vaccinated during November. Our vaccinations were down somewhat in November due to holidays which conflicted with the days that the Douglas County Health Department has carved out on their weekly calendar to We are currently working with Human Resources, County Administration, the County Attorney's Office, and our bargaining units to address the pending presidential executive order mandating COVID-19 vaccinations for federal contractors. We have begun hearing vaccine waiver requests and will continue to work with our bargaining units to prepare for the mandate. However, recent court developments have cast some doubt on if, when, or if the mandate will actually apply to us. But we will continue our preparations and continue to encourage vaccination among our staff and incarcerated persons. We will begin offering weekly vaccine booster clinics in addition to our initial vaccine clinics prior to the end of the year, and I want to thank Dr. Hughes and her staff for working with us to be able to set up that opportunity as well. We have tabulated the results from the first half of our staff survey, and the second half actually already has been, but it was administered in November, or excuse me, in December. Some key findings from Part 1 of our survey are as follows. 241 staff completed the survey. Nearly half of the respondents indicated that they would bid for an alternative work schedule if it was offered, such as a 12-hour shift. We also asked a series of questions about various scheduling models, and will use this data to plan for staffing up to 20% of the jail posts on 12-hour shifts, beginning with the July 22, 2022 shift cycle. 56% of the respondents indicated that we should rotate specialty posts more frequently in order to provide more opportunity for everyone. Having the ability to communicate with family members while on duty, improved parking, developing more mental and physical wellness supports, and easier access to computers for report writing were rated high among various suggested improvements. And lastly, I will talk more about the life and service of Ellen Condon at a subsequent meeting when I'll invite her family to be present when I ask this board to honor her service to Douglas County in a resolution. Ellen passed away at the age of 40 after a battle with cancer on December 6th. She served Department of Corrections as a correctional officer for nearly 15 years in various capacities, and she was laid to rest yesterday. And due to Ellen's passing, our staff appreciation activities planned for yesterday have been rescheduled to January 10th. And with that, I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. And kudos on the 70% vaccinated staff. That's way over the community vaccination level of, I think it's 50, 62% this morning. So congratulations on that. Regarding these pretrial initiatives that you indicated to reduce the population, I think that's commendable. The items that you listed, GPS services and pretrial release software and the other items, those are to inform the judges, the status of people who they release, but it doesn't change the basic power of the judges to set bonds or not set bonds, release people or hold people. That still remains exclusively with the judges, right?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Do we have any examples anywhere else in the country where these initiatives have been instituted and they have impacted corrections populations? I think you indicated that a good metric would be a 5% to 10% reduction, which with our average daily population of 1,100 would be 100 and some.
Right. You know, I don't know that I can point directly to an apples-to-apples comparison. Some of these, there have been, there are several jurisdictions that I could mention, but they also have been, some of those reforms have been done in conjunction with the change in state law, which mandated very significant change. We're doing this not with, you know, any advocacy for changing state law at this point. It's to do what we can do within the existing, within the existing system to give the judges more choices and, but there are numerous examples of where initiatives similar to this have been successful in reducing the jail population.
Could you give us maybe one example that we could go to and look at on our own?
Well, Cook County comes to mind, but that was driven by a variety of things in addition to the things that we are talking about. But they have reduced their jail population significantly. There's also been significant jail population reductions in California and in other states as well. But again, some of those, some of those, the framework of those changes are not apples-to-apples. Denver has had a very progressive system in this way for quite some time as well.
Would it be fair to say the most dramatic changes you see are in jurisdictions who go to no cash bond systems?
Yeah, you could, and we're not, like I said, that is not a part of our project at all. You know, we are simply just providing the judges more choices for individuals who are on the lower level of risk but remain incarcerated, which we believe that we can manage them with some support and supervision.
Great. And our usual question regarding the racial demographics of our population, I think that, and thanks for the exhibit that you have in your presentation at page 45. It appears that the majority minority population of our correction center in this last reporting period is 62.34. The Caucasian portion of the population is 37.66. That's roughly what it was within a couple points of last month, right?
That's correct. And, you know, and focus circling back to what we want to accomplish with pretrial. I can't stand here before you and predict this outcome, but theoretically, it makes sense to me that we may see some improvement in that, given that a lot of individuals who are incarcerated with us, who come from minority backgrounds, may not have the financial resources on average that, and the resources available to them with their families to be able to bail, to afford bail, giving some additional choices to judges, that the judge can either lower the bond or impose a menu of conditions in lieu of bond may help level the playing field somewhat.
Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, again, thanks for the report, the, and of course, all the time and effort it takes for you and your staff to put this stuff together. Appreciate it. Mike, the pretrial, you and I have talked about this on a couple of occasions, and we dealt with it a little bit in the last criminal justice hearing, numbers from the pretrial release initiatives. Mike, they're great, and they're great if they don't have an adverse impact on public safety. I mean, I think we both agree with that. I think a lot of people would, an adverse impact. If the array of services that we're offering, including the type of software that you talked about, the pretrial release software management program that you're going to implement probably, you know, after April, right? If this software is capable of providing data and metrics that can help us measure success, not just the success, not just the numbers of, you know, the recidivism numbers, but the numbers compared to other areas that have pretrial release programs, right? I mean, do you anticipate that some of this stuff is going to be able to be disseminated to this board and to the public as time goes on?
Absolutely.
So if that's the case, it'll be disseminated in your normal, you know, monthly processes, right? I would think, excuse me. I mean, that'd be my question.
Yes, yes.
And the reason I ask that is because I, I think the board does a really good job. What I'm curious about is, I don't think that we have to keep revisiting pretrial programs if we make it kind of a common theme in every, and you have, but even a deeper dive, right? So I'm hoping that the software management system is going to give us even more metrics.
Absolutely.
And I think you would anticipate that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would.
Mike, that's it. Thanks again for the information.
If I may, and I wanted, you brought up public safety and an adverse effect, and I think it's also, one of the things that I think is very important when you're considering this issue, is what is the public risk from the status quo? You know, you keep somebody locked up for six months while they go to trial, they get time served or a short jail sentence, and then they're out. There's always a simple answer of, we'll keep them locked up, but the idea is, and then what? You know, you have to have, you know, an end goal to this process, and to me, it makes more sense that the community will be safer if we take individuals who don't pose an imminent threat and manage them in the community with services and resources, as opposed to keeping them incarcerated, where a lot of their life, their assets in their community are going to deteriorate, and when they were released, they're in a much worse place and probably at a greater, pose a greater risk to the community.
Yeah, totally agree, Mike. What I, and maybe you wouldn't agree with this, but one of the things that happens is some of these discussions become really acute. So in other words, if there's four people, and I'm giving So in other words, if there's four people, and I'm, I'm giving you a hypothetical, if there's four people out on pretrial release and two of those people commit some heinous acts while they're out on release, those things become magnified and they become public, you know, they become public discussion pieces, so they're acute. I mean, somebody can actually use them, doesn't matter who it is, they can use them and say, well, this is adversely, you know, impacting public safety.
One minute.
So I guess what I'm saying is, that's where those metrics would come in extremely handy.
Absolutely.
If we could dig down and we're actually able, with some clarity, be able to tell people, look, we understand that there's problems with all of these type of programs, and we can analyze that, but we also know what the numbers look like. I mean, and if we didn't do that, we know what the numbers would look like six months from now, and this person actually goes back on in the street and they didn't get those type of services provided to them. So I think we're on the same page. I just, more data, the more data, the better, and, and the easier that we can get that information out to our constituents, it's gonna, it's gonna make those issues less acute. So they're gonna say, yeah, two of those issues happened, but look what we did with eight of these other, you know, items. So anyway, I, I agree with you.
Yep. And we are on the same page. And, you know, the, the point is that, you know, bad things happen in our community regularly, and most of the bad things that happen criminally have happened.
Time. Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Yeah, go ahead and finish your thought, Mike.
Okay. A, a lot of the offenses, criminal offenses that happen in the community are perpetrated by individuals who have already served sentences, served time in custody. So incarceration didn't fix it. It didn't make our community safer. All it did is kick a can down the road a little ways. That was all I can say.
Good, yeah, I think we're all on the same page with this. I think to have some type of program that helps with pretrial releases is, is very forward-thinking as opposed to just a punishment-type thing, you're trying to provide services that prevent the problem. So prevention over treatment is, is something I'm a big fan of. I was wondering, just mostly from my education, how do you identify those who are at lower risk to the community? And for example, I know when I was looking through the papers, there's, there's some, some instances where a felony defendant is put on pretrial release. And so felony to me means something really bad happened. So can you give me an idea, just from my education, who falls into this category?
So we'll, we will be using an instrument known as the Public Safety Assessment. It's an instrument that was developed within the past few years. We were selected as one of, it's been validated, I want to say this, e- even though it's a new instrument, it, its predictive power was validated on well over a million individuals from every state. And we were selected as one of twelve counties nationwide to implement it, to be among the first to implement. And that's the pilot project that we've been working on for a year. So part of the information will come from the Public Safety Assessment, which has a standardized model of measuring three different types of risk. Currently, we just get one risk score from our, our pretrial release instrument, but the judges will now get, what's the risk of this person show, not showing up for court? What's the risk of this person committing a criminal offense while they're out on bond? And third, what, is there a risk of violence? It has a flag for potential violent behavior. So the judges will be getting more information. They will also have at their disposal the individual's criminal history, any other, you know, all the records that they normally have to inform them on decisions that they make at bond setting.
That sounds like a really useful resource. And then also, does, do you know if we decrease the jail population in the short term, do you know if there's any information out there to say if this will avoid, these folks will avoid recidivism in the long term?
I don't have that at my fingertips, or, but there have been, I, I'm aware that that research exists, but I'll, I'll find you the examples.
Okay, good. Yeah, and you said this is kind of a, it sounds like it's a, a new, newer program that you're kind of developing, because there isn't really a, a standard, so to speak, that, that falls into, there's something you can just follow. As far as those programs that you're, you are aware of, though, it sounds like they've been effective. Would you agree?
I, yes, they have.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, I really appreciate your passion and the teamwork you have at your facility, what you've done with the budget being a million dollars under. I'm certain Joe Lorenz is very happy, as are we, with your efforts, and I know that's constant. And I always talk about your team, but Annie and I went to Heffey and Heffey Sunday evening, and we're there probably forty-five minutes, the line was pretty long. Met Kyle, her husband, I'm glad you're gonna, we'll do a resolution and have the family down, because she went through tremendous time there. They're really, in observing that Sunday, really a family, not a team. And you could see the compassion and the caring that all the people have for one another that work so hard to show respect, caring, safety, and everything they do at our facility. And I really want to continue to commend them and hope they get that message from all of us on the board, because I'm certain every commissioner shares my feeling about that. So I just want to let you know that and have you pass it on, you and Amber, to the team down there, that they are family, the way they care about one another and do their job. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Good morning. Quick follow-up question related to some of the comments by Commissioner Boyle and Friend. Going back to the pretrial services that we're planning on implementing, or the program, rather, and you mentioned the public safety assessments, the fact that it was done on over a million people, et cetera. So for my own education, and perhaps if the public has questions on it in the future, who tends to fall under the right points or whatever the PSA assesses that would then qualify for such a program, like pretrial program? Is, is it somebody who gets into a shoving match, a bar fight, or, you know, who, who are we talking about here? Just some tangible examples, just so ourselves and the public is aware.
Right. Well, and I want to also just give the disclaimer that it, it may be possible to have a fairly low risk score on the PSA, but due to the nature of the crime, that the individual, the judge is not going to, I mean, oftentimes, I'll, I'll use the most extreme example I can think of. Somebody who commits a murder may not have ever committed a crime or may never commit another crime, but you're not going to let that person out. And so, you know, it is possible that there are people who may have a lower risk score, but that's where the judges always, this is just one piece of information that they can use to whatever extent they wish to use to inform their decision on bond. I would say typically, to, to get to the answer of your question, you know, you're looking at some property crimes, thefts, things like that, drug-related offenses, and some, maybe some lower-level, not as serious violence issues that, kind of the scenarios that you alluded to, would probably be among the more common offenses that might be considered. And, but also, we, we'll have, I think, four different levels of intensity for supervision. So that if, if somebody, let's say somebody is accused of something very serious and their bond is real high, but they come up with the resources to bond out anyway, they, the community can still be protected by the judge saying, okay, I'll set your bond, it's going to cost you five hundred thousand dollars to get out, but you're still going to have to, if you pay it, participate in all these conditions of supervision. And so that, I think, is where, you know, you have the protection of all, setting the cash bond high plus all of the conditions in place as well.
Got it, thank you. So I appreciate that answer, and just also appreciation for launching such an initiative, also for the mental health emphasis that you are doing through ARPA and other means, and also for treating your staff as really important stakeholders, doing the staff survey that you talked about in here, getting their input on, you know, the operations of Corrections, et cetera, and just continuously getting that input. You know, we know that their jobs are difficult, we know that they do important work, so I appreciate you as a leader, you know, making sure that these surveys happen and continuously getting their feedback. So thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Louise.
Louise Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I want to comment on an observation that I think that you guys do a good job talking with the corrections and then the presentation, because today you've demonstrated like the type of discussion we should have about public safety. You said everybody's concerned about public, public safety, and a lot of times, if somebody wants to do something different, they may be seen as somebody that doesn't, hasn't, like, considered a public safety. We want our neighborhoods to be safe, we don't want criminals in the, in the, in our mists, and you guys do talk about doing things differently, even changing state law if necessary. So I wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others, comments? Thank you, Mike. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Also, the minutes for the pre-board meeting on Monday, December sixth, twenty-twenty-one are available on the website. Item B, approval of the claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through O. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Last night, we had a new school board member sworn into office on the oath that maybe a lot of us have forgotten, but she certainly has reminded us of it. And that's one of the thing about rules. Rules set forth as reasonable and necessary or just reasonable in the Open Meetings Act, for example, are not really defiant. And so across the various boards we have in civic governments, open meetings per se, those rules are all different. And I don't know what's really reasonable about that, because some restrict citizen comments altogether. But the intent of the Open Meetings Act to be enforced by a Douglas County attorney and a Nebraska Attorney General is basically for citizen input. So a lot of us have forgotten the oath of office to preserve and protect the Constitution of the United States, specifically on this item, the freedom to address and petition our government, which started a whole big problem way back in the seventeen hundreds, didn't it? When people were not allowed and they had restrictive government, which we now have again. Founding fathers did say, when your government, our governments are founded to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and when that government is not, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it is a citizen's rights to throw off that government, alter that government, change that government, but there's very limited means to do that. I cannot vote other people in or out that are not in my district, et cetera. So I can't change a lot of things. I can only particularly address issues after this meeting independently with probably my own commissioner. I cannot influence the rest of you. This is my only, this is my only opportunity to address all of you. Other boards don't even allow that. Omaha Public Schools last night, another example of unreasonable rules. They have an agenda item that just gives you a topic. It says nothing whatsoever about what's on the topic. At least you people explain it a little bit. If we want to look into it further, we can. But not so with Omaha Public School Boards. Accepting responsibility for government? I don't know, we have all these different bodies, and all these different bodies have many meetings, many council meetings, many government, board meetings, many public school meetings, learning community council meetings. The best practices crowd from national associations of governments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, seem to be ruling our local politicians rather than the citizen. And that needs to stop. Show me the proof where all the best practices have solved a lot. Where is the proof of that? And finally, how can we believe that what the best practices crowds say is true and effective? And since they, they are not, most of them are national people, they're not necessarily from this county, they're not necessarily from this city or this state, but you people do spend our taxpayer dollars to attend and listen to their propagandists, their ideas, their best practices. But where's the proof that those best practices all work? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Louise Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. Want to make a clarification. If there's a perceived violation of the Opens Meetings Act, the statute states that it's up to the, the state Attorney General, the county Attorney General, and any citizen can submit a complaint in court before a judge with purview. Just have to spend eighty-five dollars, make sure that your complaint is, will be accepted. So you want to describe with detail what the violation was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our presentation, our COVID-nineteen update and COVID-nineteen vaccination plan update presented by Dr. Lindsay Hughes. Good morning.
There you go. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Feels like it's been a while since I've been up here. It's nice to see you. All right. We are currently still sitting in the high transmission category in Douglas County for COVID-nineteen. I'm pretty sure that doesn't surprise anyone at this point. Let's dive into some of the data. Currently, we're sitting at three hundred and forty-two cases per hundred thousand for a seven-day total, which is a pretty significant increase. If you look at the graph, you can kind of see where we've come from since, let's say, October. You can put October kind of in the middle here. We've had quite the increase, really over the last month and a half, two months. Based on trends nationally and across the globe, I don't expect that that trend is going to decrease significantly just yet. So, you know, hopefully with, with the efforts that we have happening around vaccination and, you know, encouraging people to still use non-pharmaceutical interventions to prevent spread, hopefully we'll be able to dampen that spike somewhat so that it's maybe not as high in other places, but we are certainly continuing to see a pretty serious number of cases in our, in our community. Let's take a look and see who's getting COVID right now. So if you look here, you're going to notice two trends or So if you look here, you're going to notice two trends or two areas to watch or of concern that we can discuss. The first is the 30 to 39-year-old age group. So this, this group has really increased in cases fairly significantly over the past few weeks. So you can see that these light blue sections are quite a bit bigger than they were in previous weeks. So what's driving that really is around people still being unvaccinated and also those who haven't yet gotten boosters who are due for them. We also have seen some growth in the 20 to 29 age group, so really those young to middle-aged adults. And again, it's a lot of, you know, people who are unvaccinated and also those who might be overdue by some time for a booster, so they've had waning immunity. You can also see in the green and below, which is our pediatric population, that we have continued to see kind of some, some steady growth there. It's been up and down depending on the week, but we do continue to see quite a few of our under-19 age group with COVID. And, you know, that, that a lot is due to the fact that they are still becoming vaccinated. Our older adolescents have a little bit higher vaccination rate, of course, because they've been eligible for a longer period, and we're working on getting those younger ones vaccinated as well, which is a, right now is, is a pretty busy effort and ongoing, and we'll talk about that here in just a few minutes. Test positivity is always something that we have questions about, so I'm going to, there it is. We have, we have its own tab now for this. If you noticed, we reorganized a little bit. I think Carol might have walked you through that a little bit last week. So if you, if you look here, and I'm going to move my window, you'll see that our test positivity since September has kind of inched its way up, and we're now sitting at 12.5 for that. Let's look at where cases are occurring. All right. Sorry, that's huge. There we go. So you can see it's really kind of the usual suspects in terms of where we're seeing our highest number of cases. This, this chart has remained fairly similar over, over the past months in terms of where we're seeing most of our cases occurring, many in that Elkhorn Corridor and then across central Douglas County. Our hospitalizations continue to be a major concern for us. If you look in the, at the right, you can see the trend, this trend line, this really jagged trend line that's going consistently up over time. We are currently, as of yesterday, sitting at 89% capacity with our, for total inpatient, 90% for ICU, 87% for Peds. Earlier, over the weekend, I believe it was, they spiked to mid-90s. And so that, of course, just highlights the fact that our healthcare capacity continues to really be full to the extreme. And the numbers that we show you here really don't tell the whole story of hospitalizations. So yes, this is where, you know, this is what the occupancy rate is showing as in our data, but it doesn't tell the story of what's happening in the hospitals to maintain that occupancy rate. So you have nurses and doctors that are taking care of way more patients than they would normally. You have people who are taking care of an acuity level of patient that normally maybe they wouldn't and haven't had a lot of experience or training, but you're just kind of grabbing whoever you can to, to take care of patients. So to say that we're at, you know, 89 or 90% capacity really doesn't tell the whole story, and I hope that everyone will kind of keep that in mind. You can see over on the left, this huge jump in hospitalizations. So that, that gives you a really good picture of kind of what's been happening in terms of admissions. And then our ventilator usage has also steadily gone up. We've had some, some decreases as we've kind of climbed that hill, but the overall trend there has been to increase. And right now, we have 41 vents in use. Last week, we had over 50. So definitely are seeing a lot of acuity, a lot of high-acuity COVID illness. We reported 11 deaths over the past week, reports that came into us, and there are a handful that are being processed right now. So I don't have the exact number, but well over 11 deaths that have been reported over the past week. Let me move this again. As you can see, our breakthrough rates have increased somewhat over the past couple of weeks. I think when we first put this up, our, our breakthrough rate was somewhere around .8. So you can see we've increased quite a bit over the past couple of months. That's not necessarily a surprise because we know that vaccine, the efficacy of the vaccine wears off over time and you need a booster. Right now, we're sitting at about 35% of Douglas County residents over 18 having either the third dose or the booster. So, you know, basically, it's like trying to build up herd immunity where you already built up herd immunity, kind of have to go back, back in there to, to boost those numbers. So that has increased. Our, our death rate for people who are vaccinated has remained constant, however. 0.01% of those who have been vaccinated have, have then died of COVID-19. So basically, what that tells us is that we know that the vaccine, you know, we have the, the waning immunity over time. However, it is still doing a pretty good job of preventing severe illness and deaths. Not to say that we haven't had some in our hospitals, but, you know, even with, with the breakthrough cases that are occurring, the vaccine does still provide some protection even with those, you know, even if you haven't gotten your booster yet, although we know that the booster is very good at re-upping that immunity. And then also talking about the Omicron virus or the Omicron variant that's circulating in most countries at this point, we know that the most current research that's showing up, and of course, most of the research right now is very preliminary because it's so new, but that those who are vaccinated do have some protection there and that a booster really helps when it comes to Omicron. So if people haven't gotten their boosters yet, it's a good time to do that. Our vaccination campaign is ongoing, and we have been extremely busy over the past couple of weeks. Makes staff tired, but we're so excited every time we have a clinic in-house and we have a line out the door of people coming in to get vaccine. It just, you know, it makes it all worth it to see people coming in and getting protected. Our clinics out in the public also are pretty well-attended, so we're just really, really happy that that is happening and we hope that that continues. So right now, we're sitting at 66.5% of all of our Douglas County residents having one dose, 71.8% of those who are eligible. So just to remind you that all DC residents is going to include those under five who aren't eligible yet. So 71.8% of those who are eligible have been vaccinated with at least one dose. In terms of being fully vaccinated, 66.9% of the eligible population and 62% of our total population. We've had some great growth here. We still have a lot of work to do, though. If you remember early talks about herd immunity, you'll remember that typically what you see is herd immunity when you're up in the 80% range with most vaccines. And so obviously, there's quite a bit of room for growth there. So we're, we're just continuing to push on and get as many people protected as we possibly This is our adolescent age group, so they kind of became eligible in that middle frame, timeframe. 61.3 of them are fully vaccinated and 67.9 have one dose. And then for our newest eligible population, our 5 to 11, right now, we're at 15.5% of that total population being vaccinated, 26.9% have had one dose. So that number is going up. We're really excited about that, and we continue to learn from the people who are bringing in their kids. We're, we're just learning a lot of, you know, what's going on in the community and what their needs are in terms of this population. And we're continuing to work with the schools to hold vaccination clinics where, you know, people can bring their kids in to get vaccinated, but they can get their, if they haven't been vaccinated, they can get theirs as well. So we're trying to keep it as open as possible and not just limit any of our clinics to just one group of people. Here's what our vaccine map looks like, and it looks the same as it has for a while. So we continue to have high rates of vaccination in that Elkhorn and Bennington Corridor. There are over 71.4% of, of the populations in those zip codes are currently fully vaccinated. You can see through the middle area, we continue to struggle, and then we have North and South Omaha that we're continuing to do a lot of efforts around trying to get as many people in those zip codes protected as well. We have fantastic community partners in both North and South Omaha who have been just invaluable to, to reaching people, and we'll continue to work with them to make this work in the way that's best for the people that we're trying to reach. So far, we have not identified Omicron variant here in Douglas County. I checked this morning just to make sure that hadn't missed a sequencing, and so far, we still have not picked it up here in Douglas County. That doesn't mean that it's not here. It just means that of the people who have been tested and then we've gone on to sequence their tests, it hasn't been identified yet. We know we've had a few cases here in Nebraska. Right now, the strain that we're continuing to see is Delta virus. So we'll continue to watch for that. We continue to watch and gather data from, you know, national partners and listening to the news and really using as many sources as possible to keep our, our finger on the pulse of what's happening with, with Omicron. It sounds like in Europe, they're, they're well on track for Omicron to outpace Delta sometime in the next couple of weeks. They've had one death in, in the UK from Omicron so far, and they continue, of course, to just see spikes of, of cases related to that. So we know that in the United States, we tend to lag behind the UK in terms of our trends. So, you know, we watch very closely what's happening in those countries to, to understand what's happening and, and at least be prepared. Sometimes we can't always predict perfectly what's going to happen, but we definitely want to be prepared when and if it happens to outpace Delta here. There's still a lot of questions that we have unanswered in terms of Omicron virus, so we still don't know definitively if it's more transmissible. We don't know definitively if it makes people more sick or causes more hospitalization. So again, we'll keep paying attention, keep gathering as much data as possible, and keep the community updated on really what to expect with that. And then I also wanted to, if you don't mind, jump back to hospitalizations just for a quick moment. I met with all of the hospital system leadership over the past week to, just to discuss really what's happening in terms of capacity. It sounds like there is really a throughput issue. So what a lot of hospitals are experiencing is you have people come in, they get care for a while, they really need to be discharged to maybe a subacute care facility or a skilled nursing facility, or even would be more appropriately placed in a behavioral health setting, and there is nowhere to send these people. So if, if this issue around kind of this bottleneck, you know, around getting people out and to a better place for them to receive their, their care, that would help some. It would help to alleviate some of that bottleneck and, and some of that capacity. Here on the community side, though, we also really need to be mindful of what's happening in these hospitals. The stories are hair-raising, what is happening and what, what physicians and nurses and techs and, you know, all of the people involved in patient care, really what they're going through on a day-to-day basis. They're, they're so exhausted, they're so overwhelmed, their resources, you know, both internally and, and within the system are dwindling. There, there could come a time when, when our hospitals aren't, just can't take anymore. And so I want to really stress, especially to the public, that we need to remain vigilant. I know that this is a time everybody wants to gather, everybody wants to celebrate. Nobody, nobody wants a COVID pandemic right now, and I, no one more so than, than I. However, our reality is that our community continues to be highly impacted by this virus. Our hospital systems continue to be highly impacted by this virus as well. And if there's, if, if we can do anything on the community side to help stem that tide, we have a civic duty to do that. So if people, I, I just really want to encourage people to continue following those, you know, those measures that we know work. So obviously, get vaccinated. That's one of the best ways that you can prevent this. If you don't know where to get vaccinated, go to the Douglas County Health Department website. There's a button there. I'll even show it to you. So right front and center, COVID-19 vaccination sites. And if you click on that, you're going to get the list of all of the places over the next couple of weeks, and actually, our, our schedule right now is full through the end of December, where you can go to get that. Most, every single one of these clinics can be done on a walk-in basis. We prefer appointments just because it helps us plan, but by no means will we turn anyone away who just walks in. I also want to continue to encourage people to wear their masks when they're in public spaces, as annoying and uncomfortable as that can be. It really does make a difference for the people who are, who are around you. It makes a difference for your family, for your friends, and also helps those who are providing our healthcare in this community. Other good measures continue to be social distancing, you know, if you can meet virtually with, with family and friends instead of having so many in-person gatherings, that's helpful. You can test, so, you know, testing when you're gathering can help too, just to assure that no one is currently infected. But hand washing continues to be important, and I always chuckle a little bit that we have to still say that you got to wash your hands, but you got to wash your hands, people. And, you know, just continuing to be vigilant about what's happening here in the community and checking the dashboard so that you can plan effectively for whatever is happening in your life. And with that, I think I can take some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Commissioner Boyle?
Yep. Thanks, thanks for that. And just to piggyback a couple of things on what you said, it's really, this, this is not about beds being available in hospitals as much as it's about having the, the nurses and the doctors and the CNAs and environmental services and everyone else being available. I mean, there's a staffing shortage because why would you work in a COVID unit when you could work in outpatient surgery center eight to five and not be exposed and not have those hours? And so, so bottom line is, it really is about the, the people, those of us working in a hospital setting, we're, we're the reason why there's, a lot of that bed capacity is not there, but we just need, need more people taking, with those advanced degrees or even, you know, the, the CNAs, we just need people, bodies in the hospital to take care of those that are sick. The other things we're, we're seeing is that the people who are presenting to the ER, these are folks who usually don't like to, to deal with, with the medical system anyway. So when they, by the time they come in, they are sick.
Yeah.
So that's why we're seeing these, the beds fill up a lot faster, more people on ventilators right now, because these are people who don't like to come to the doctor anyway. So, so with that, you know, we all know that there's a certain, in the medical field, there's a certain part of the population who will never be folks who come to see us for preventive care. So those are the folks coming in. So I think what that, what that also means is it's really difficult to change like human behavior to get to get vaccinated or to wear a mask. So just to piggyback on that, because of human behavior, can, can you tell what the, can you predict what the natural course of a, of variant is? Like usually a, a virus will come and go, just like with the flu virus each year. Any thoughts on what Delta's doing or what COVID has been doing?
Yeah, so what we've seen nationally, or I should say internationally, and I'm going to pop back over here to this. I just always feel like it's easier to talk if people have something to look at to tie what we're saying to. So, you know, the trends that we're seeing are, are pretty similar to what has been seen in other countries that are ahead of us with Delta. But anytime you have people that are gathering in groups more frequently and are inside and, you know, maybe at the shopping mall more frequently because it's Christmas time, you're going to see more cases. So, you know, it's, it's just a given at this point that, you know, until we have vaccination at a certain level and this is tamped down to an endemic thing, every time we have a change in human behavior, we, we can kind of see the trend. So for instance, in the summertime, people tend to be outside more. And so, you know, last summer, we saw this lovely dip, which I think we falsely believed that we were in the clear at that point. You know, and then as soon as people are, are back inside more often and gathering in indoor spaces closely more often, then you see, you, you're going to see these, these increases in cases.
Yeah, I was surprised it wouldn't be more of a straight line going up, but being outside, or I suppose that first drop was also due to vaccinations happening for the first time, that big drop.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's right. And, you know, when you're talking about hospitalizations, we typically see hospitalization and deaths that lag by a couple of weeks when we see our case spikes. So, you know, we, we're in this spike right now and we're, we're sitting at like ninety percent capacity, but really it's more like probably ninety-nine percent capacity in our hospitals when you figure what, what the staff are actually doing to make that happen. It's, it's very possible we're also going to see an increase in hospitalizations that follow where we are right now.
And then also if you, if-
One minute.
For folks who have had COVID, there's a, you know, they have antibodies, does that provide more protection than vaccination?
It doesn't provide more protection than vaccination and really, the thing with natural immunity is, is that it's, it's not consistent from person to person. So somebody might get COVID and have pretty decent protection for several months. Another person might get COVID and really their antibodies do not, do not maintain a high level for a long time and so they become vulnerable sooner. And it's just, it's uneven across a population and that's why vaccination is so important because it actually provides reliable, long-term protection. If, you can call six months long-term at this point, it seems long-term for, for the pandemic anyway. It, it does provide much more standard coverage across a population. So even if you've had, even if you've had COVID-19, we still recommend you get vaccinated.
Time. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. I think you indicated that the positivity rate is twelve and a half percent?
Correct.
That's up?
It is, yes.
And I, I've seen some information out there that is geographic and it shows Douglas County is a COVID hotspot. Is that reflective of that?
Yeah, and that's, it's not necessarily surprising because we have a high concentration of population here in Douglas County. So more opportunities for spread and just more cases.
Right. So I see it broken down by per hundred thousand and our per hundred thousand is above, say, Chicago's and Denver's and other big cities in this area, so I guess we should be extra careful going into the holidays.
Agreed, agreed. And it's important, I think, too, to check if you're planning to travel for the holidays, to check what's happening where you're going and make sure that your vigilance level matches what's happening in those communities.
And the breakthrough percentage of two point five percent, that's edged up as well.
It has, yes.
But that said, the overwhelming majority of people contracting COVID are unvaccinated.
We, we continue to see that, yes.
There's an interesting graph here on onset dates. And this tracks a lot of the other graphs, I guess, that, that you, you have on the dashboard. By the way, excellent dashboard. Which shows that, you know, we're bumping up against, except for the high last year, we're bumping up against the highest that we've been since the onset.
That's absolutely right.
That's true of this onset dates. That means more and more people onset are getting COVID day by day.
Correct. So not just when we received the report, but, you know, sometimes we can report by when we got a report. This is the date that we got all these reports, which is not always exactly accurate. When you look at when the onset occurred, that is actually showing you when people became ill. So it would be the date that their symptoms started.
So as to this mask protocol, we have a, you know, legislative meeting every week here in the LC. Would it be appropriate for people to wear masks in this setting?
I believe so, yes. My, my professional recommendation at this point of time has not changed and that is that people should be wearing masks when they're in indoor spaces in the public, regardless of their vaccination status.
We have a much smaller room, it's probably twenty by twenty just behind the council here, that we have executive committee meetings with a dozen or more people. Would it be appropriate in that setting to wear masks?
Of course, yes.
And as far as the holidays go, I mean, I know a lot of families are trying to be protective of their families and making sure that everybody that was around that can be vaccinated is vaccinated. But there's holiday events. You mentioned the malls and stuff. Is it important to wear masks in the mall when you're shopping?
Absolutely. So anytime you're at a concert or a play or out shopping, you know, anytime you're, you're mixing with large groups of people, wearing a mask is a great idea. And I have to say Omaha Performing Arts has done a great job of enforcing that and asking people to wear masks. I was able to attend their Nutcracker with my daughter and it was absolutely a joy. And it was made even more so by the fact that I felt that we were, we were all doing our best to be safe and still enjoy the holiday.
So any holiday gathering, holiday parties, office parties, or, you know, there was just a Omaha Bar Association party for hundreds of lawyers in a ballroom, but it would be appropriate in those settings to wear masks as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hughes, again, thank you for the information. We talked about the eighty-nine percent overall capacity in the hospitals in, in Douglas County. You also, correct me if I'm wrong, eighty-seven percent hospital, hospitalization or capacity rates in pediatrics?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Do we know what percentage? You may have broken them out, I didn't, I didn't see it. Do we, do we know what percentage is based on, of those eighty-seven percent hospitalization capacity rates in pediatrics is based on COVID, maybe the flu, RSV, emergency surgery, pneumonia, chronic illnesses? Do we have those broken out? Do we, do we know?
We don't get that breakdown. I could certainly ask for that to see if they're willing to provide it, but right now, we don't get that.
The rea-, doctor, the reason I asked the question is not to make a political point or anything of that nature, it's just curiosity.
Sure.
And I think that you remember maybe a couple of months ago when I went off on a diatribe on RSV. Every one of my kid, the kids in my family, when they were little, had RSV. And it's never gone away. And I, I guess the thing is, we, we have a society and that, I, again, I'm not trying to get political with it. We have a society right now that is afraid, rightfully so, because we've got a healthcare system because of COVID that has been excruciatingly stressed, right? It's, it's stressed to the gills. But we're particularly interested in the one to five-year-old range. And again, for twenty-five years, I've been dealing with RSV issues with, with little kids. And the, the panic wasn't the same then as it is now. I'm trying to figure out how many kids are in a pediatric ward with COVID and don't have RSV or don't have pneumonia. The only thing that they could do for one of my kids is inject them with a bunch of steroids. And then we lived the next two years of our lives in constant fear. Well, we're living life in constant fear now and I have no idea if the, if the, you see where I'm going with this. I have no idea where the zero to five range with COVID justifies that fear, right? I, I'm not talking about vaccinations, I'm not talking about masks, I'm not talking about anything else. We are running around in constant fear and I, and I, I sometimes I don't get the feeling that we're getting all the appropriate data. So I know we can break that out, I, I'm not requiring it. I just, for my curiosity, I'd like to know how many kids are in these hospitals with COVID? That's why they got checked in. So that, I guess that's my, my question. And again, thank you for all the information. I'm as concerned about all of this as everybody else and I'm, and I'm trying to make sense of it. So-
Sure.
Thank you, doctor.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Just to answer a little bit about that, Commissioner Friend is, I was at a, a staff meeting for my hospital last night and the ER doctor that's on the medical executive committee with me just, before the meeting, we were just chatting. He just goes, "Oh my God, COVID, COVID, COVID." So as hard as it is to feel like we're blowing this out of proportion, that's the thing that is coming in the doors and making the bed availability less. So when, now with kids, it's going to be a different matter. But masks don't only protect from COVID, they also protect from flu. So, so I think it's important to understand, it seems like this is the, kind of a dramatic throw when we talk about COVID so much, but that's the thing that's really putting the strain on the medical professionals. And so, so I know it sounds like it's a broken record and we're blowing it out of proportion, but we're, we're really not right now. And it's, it's burning the people out. Then the other question I have for you, Dr. Hughes, really is that, you know, we've heard that, that boosters can be helpful to protect maybe against the new variants. Do you have any idea is, it seems like with the first two shots then, that means immunity may have waned. We get the booster and then do you think that immunity is going to wane and we'll have to, like, boosters are going to be something just that we do every year, just like we do with, with the flu vaccine?
That's a great question. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of answers to that end just yet. I know that that is a question that is actively being looked at. We just, you know, it's too early to tell since we've just basically started getting boosters. I've also heard that there are new vaccines, maybe improved vaccines on the horizon for this that might even work better. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we just don't have a lot of information on that.
And you also mentioned that with Omicron, we don't know enough about it to know if it's more contagious, if the symptoms are worse. We don't, we just don't know yet.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
We'll keep watching.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks. Just real quick, so the folks watching catch this and your dashboard is the place to go to get this. We have a community that's sixty-two percent vaccinated and we've had a total of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one positive cases. Our population, according to the latest census that I was able to get, is five hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine. So that's a, a good chunk of the overall population has had COVID and a couple hundred thousand plus are not vaccinated. And we've suffered, I think it's eight hundred and seventy-nine deaths in our community as a result of COVID, which is tragic. The impact of this just seems to go on and on. I think I share everybody's feeling of kind of, when will this end? I, I don't expect you to give us any kind of an idea, but thanks for your information and it empowers us to do the right thing, wear a mask, wash your hands, get a vaccination, get a booster shot. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Rogers?
Okay, Dr. Hughes, the meeting you had with the hospitals yesterday. Then is it crisis critical stage, you said, or did you say?
It's, not all hospital systems are at that stage. Some, some are very close to being at a, at a crisis stage. Most are kind of teetering between contingency and crisis at this point. And, you know, it only takes a handful of admissions to push them over that, over that ledge. The, the broad feeling there was, you know, they want to do as much as possible to keep capacity and keep, keep care moving the way they want to provide it until they absolutely can't. And so they're not there quite yet, but I would say close.
So when we see numbers like ninety-seven percent, basically it's the area, there could be some hospitals that are there?
There could be, there could be, yeah. I mean, it, it takes quite a bit of effort calling around to find beds and, and figuring out where to transfer somebody. But I will also say that, you know, across the region, high capacity is kind of the norm right now.
So, you know, the, the hospital numbers are lagging indicator because it's the end result of you getting something. So help, being a slagging indicator, the numbers have jumped about a hundred, so there, there, there's going to be more people coming. At what point? What's the difference between critical care, crisis critical care and rationing?
The terms are actually used interchangeably. So rationing, of course, sounds pretty horrible. You know, it involves really being very careful in how those resources are being allocated. The crisis standards are, are basically the formalized version of, of care rationing. So basically what happens in crisis standards is that there's very careful triaging of patients to a level of care. Those who are most like, who, who are quite sick but have the most likelihood of recovering usually have priority versus those who would need extraordinary measures, who could survive if, if extraordinary measures were applied or if long-term chronic measures were applied, may not get the care that they would have before those crisis standards are, are in place. But it's really a method to ensure that with the very scarce resources that you have that, that that care is distributed in a, in an equitable way to those, to, to, in a way that will be best for the entire population, so that people are still able to get some level of care. But it is not, it's not the same as what you would get when you're not necessarily in that situation.
So they're, they're related, they're not exactly the same?
Yeah, I would say rationing is probably, probably if you were just simply rationing, it would not be as equitable and it would not be as formalized. So the nice thing about these types of standards is that it gives hospitals kind of a plan, a roadmap, what to do when they get to that, to that point. And there, most hospitals have, have those crisis standards or an internal plan for that as part of an emergency response because if you saw, you know, like a mass casualty type event, then you would very temporarily be implementing crisis standards of care. Now we're in this kind of weird situation where our, our mass cash has been going on for two years now. And so we, we have, I guess, the liberty to-
One minute.
-discuss it a little bit, instead of just having to throw everybody into it like you would in, in an actual, like, short-term disaster.
So let me try to give you two at once just to end it. So one of them is, at, I'm going to give you scenarios. So say somebody, right now we're ninety-seven percent. You get at a point, somebody has a heinous accident. What options do you have for this person? And being that we're saying critical crisis care and we're trying to get to a point, at, at what point do you think hospitals need to make decisions where we see, or if we see tents in the parking lot?
Yeah. Good question. And I don't know that, you know, it would really depend on whether they had somebody in that moment who could stabilize that person. But, you know, at ninety-seven percent capacity, there may not be. You know, it's very possible-
Time. Commissioner Morgan?
Eight hundred and seventy-nine deaths and you don't wanna make light of it at all, any one death we care about. But those numbers on our population would be just over one-tenth of 1% in our community. And I've had the Modern and the booster and I urge everyone to get the vaccination for sure. But at least, you know, we don't wanna be hollering fire. I think we gotta keep working to raise those percentages and as you do each time that you're here at our board meeting, we appreciate that for the message to go out. But I do think we are fortunate that we're at the one and a half-tenth of 1% for as long as we've been through this, which is coming up on almost two years now. Getting close.
That's a, that's a good point. I, I would also just mention there that the fact that we have, we've only had 879 cases has been really due to the extraordinary efforts of our healthcare system and to a lot of the measures that we've put in place in the community. And without those, that death rate would be much higher, so.
Correct, and that's great that you stated that, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Dr. Hughes, if you can remember where you were, because the question was, the scenario, if you had a heinous disease, what would be the options? And being that critical, we're, we're using this distinction in terms of critical care, I'm assuming they're making plans not to turn anybody away. At, at what, I mean, are they talking about tents and things? Us having to make makeshift tents in parking lots and other places around to try to meet capacity if you don't have anything inside?
No, so typically under crisis standards, it's, it's not that you're setting up additional surge capacity, because, I mean, really, we don't have anyone to surge with at this point. It, it really is, when you go into the hospital system, you're, you're going to be assessed for your level of illness, injury, whatever it is. And then basically you get a score and the care that you get after that is really, you're, you're put in order, basically. People with the lowest score get the highest priority of care. And then you, you, basically it goes down the line. So, once all of those people get the care that they need, then, then they go to the next number and then to the next number and the next number. So, it, it really is a way to prioritize and triage who gets care. So, if you were in a horrible car wreck and you're going to need, you know, emergency surgery to survive and maybe multiple, you know, very, very heavy levels of, of intervention, your score is probably gonna go up and, and the chances of you getting that life-saving care may, may go down. It really depends on the capacity at that particular time.
And I'm assuming the protocol is, if you, if there's no room here, then they have to start looking regionally? And the question is, can they get you there and?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, in that kind of a case, if they, if, if a hospital said, "There's no way we can take care of this person," they would, of course, try to find care. By no means am I suggesting that people are being left out in the cold. But at that point, they would have to, you know, call around to find who could take care of that level of injury or illness and then arrange for transportation to get them there, hoping that that person would survive that transport.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next, we will move to our committees. The first is the finance and the budget report as presented. Then we have three ARPA funding items. The first is the approval of a resolution authorizing the use of $5,001,132 in ARPA funds for the Douglas County Corrections Department. This is for increased staffing costs driven by COVID measures, as well as safety and mental health services to lower the risk of self-harming behaviors. Also, a pre-trial supervision program will be instituted to lower the overcrowded jail conditions and reduce COVID risks. This has gone through the process of hearing it from the full board through the ARPA committee meeting and then has been approved by our Deloitte and Touche partner. And now it is time for this board to decide to approve or not approve this item. So, with that, what's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next ARPA funding item is approval of a resolution authorizing the use of 955,950 in ARPA funds for the Douglas County Youth Center for hiring of two licensed mental health therapists and then a behavioral health initiative to meet the mental health needs of the youth residents and the purchase of tablets for the youth program to assist in managing behaviors. Again, this has gone through the ARPA committee process, has been approved by Deloitte and Touche. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please, yes? Yes, yes. Pertaining to the item, pertaining to this item.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I represent myself, but taxpayers in general. I think we're supposed to disclose those things. But anyway, the big picture of things for citizens is government doesn't exist to fund everything. That's supposed to be left to the individuals and local people. But here we are racing to get more money from the federal government that actually came from people like me and you. Tax dollars, I don't know where else you could've got it from. Everybody, everybody's running to get this money. Are we soon going to be bankrupt? Possibly. What if we get into a major war? What, how are you gonna provide money for that? You keep borrowing from China to pay your debts because we don't balance a budget? Here we are, running for money to, to keep programs that will not exist without it because the county taxpayers don't have the money themselves. So, perhaps in the overall view of things, we need to stop spending so much. Because once the money goes away, what happens to these programs? What happens to the people that have been promised free stuff? It won't be there, will it? How do you think they'll feel then? If all of these programs are so successful, why are all the numbers going up and we have to ask for more money? This is your responsibility as a board to figure that out. If it's not successful, you don't throw more money at it. The numbers are definitely up. And now in Omaha, we're having more and more home invasions, more and more shootings in North Omaha. Yes, there's maybe some violence in other areas, but we don't, it's not reported on from other areas. There's much home invasions and shootings. It seems to be from North Omaha. Why aren't all of our programs successful in stopping the violence there? Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
Let me just say, no, for the record, I don't know where a shooting in North Omaha got tied to this item, but the statement made in respects to spending the money, this will be initial investment upfront and will be absorbed into the budget phased in. And so, to the point of saying the board's consideration, the board has considered that and, and use the funding to initially start up and then it will be absorbed in. So, I just wanted to say that for the record.
No other questions or comments? Please vote. PJ? You're not voting?
Motion passes seven to zero.
I love your sweater, PJ. ARPA funding is approval of a resolution authorizing the award of $1,500,000 in ARPA funds to Front Porch Investments to provide partial funding for operations for a non-congregate shelter, to provide temporary housing to vulnerable populations impacted by COVID-19. And I would like to note here that, that 1.5 million is being provided through, each commissioner, if you remember, got $2.5 million of ARPA funds to spend in their district and $1,250,000 is coming from Commissioner Maureen Boyle and $250,000 is coming from Commissioner Garcia to fund this project. It has gone through the ARPA committee as well as being approved by our partner, Deloitte and Touche. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Boyle?
My mic, there we go. Just to mention, this money is going to Front Porch Investments. They're, they're really on the front edge, the leading edge of how to address the housing crisis in, in our county. So, I just wanna read part of their proposal, because I think this gives you an idea of who they are and what they do. And then I'll have a couple of folks from their organization come speak on their behalf. So, as part of their proposal, they said, "Successes are documented through both qualitative and quantitative data. Approximately 278 individuals were served last year with 42% of guests exiting to permanent housing. Thirty-five additional non-congregate sheltering residents were prioritized for emergency housing vouchers through OHA and will have subsidized housing for at least 10 years. Forty-three people worked with case managers to obtain critical documents like IDs and birth certificates, opening up employment and housing opportunities that didn't previously exist. When NCS sites share lessons learned nationally, people consistently experience improved health and fewer vulnerabilities, simply because they have safe, private living space and can focus on things other than where they will find safety each night. Additionally, in our county, 105 non-congregate sheltering residents were referred by traditional emergency shelter locations for purposes of COVID-19 density reduction. Some were referred from locations that were not fit for human habitation, like they were living in their, on the streets or in their car, or they had fire damage to their homes. The remaining guests were referred from, from hospitals, jails, temporary hotels, being homeless, couch surfing, doubled up with friends or family, eviction from rentals. So, the bottom line is, this is a safety net organization. And I think it's really important for us to not only see this as the right thing to do for people, but to be honest with you, it's actually a money-saving for the county. These folks aren't going to jail and spending the night there. So, I, I think when we think about things like that, they're also getting services they need so that they're not continuing to go through homeless types of situations and needing more services. Some are getting jobs, they're just helping, being helped with their lives. And I think the, the key to this program is not non-congregate health, non-congregate housing itself. It's more has to do with, with the services provided to help these folks get on with their lives if they can. So, it's really providing that safety net, that, those services. And so, that's, that's why I think this is a very important project to fund.
And you said you had two people here, Naomi?
Yep, I've got Naomi Haddaway, who's the Director of Operations for, for Front Porch Investments, and Meredith Dillon, she's the Executive Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Naomi Haddaway, Director of Operations for Front Porch Investments. Address is 1120 South 101st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. We're here to answer questions that you might have and really appreciate your consideration of this request.
Okay, I see no questions, but do you wanna introduce yourself, Meredith?
Yes, I'll join, sorry. Meredith Dillon, Executive Director of Front Porch Investments, also at 1120 South 101st Street.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
So, just a couple of things, I'd just like you to, to bring up the fact that this is something that has been proven already and then, more than anything, just how this, we only have funding for, this is a one-time funding thing, so you plan, how do you plan to sustain this?
Yeah, so I can answer the first part of your question and then we'll have Meredith answer the, the last part. We did have an opportunity to prove this concept as something that was really valuable. Last winter, as a response to both the winter climate and as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we operated at the request of both the county and the state through a directed health measure to provide non-congregate shelter. Last year, we leased two hotels and that was some of the numbers that you read, Commissioner Boyle, were across two different hotels. And knowing that we had to have the same kind of solutions going into this winter, we wanted to see about being a little bit more strategic about how we used funding. And that's why we're looking at the acquisition of a building, so that we can not only respond when climate crisis happens, when winter happens, and, you know, hopefully not another pandemic down the road, but so that we can provide that temporary and transitional housing opportunity to get people on their feet and into their next space.
I would add in that last year, this was a partnership between the City of Omaha and private philanthropy. And this year, it's exciting to see the county come into play with the City of Omaha. And we currently have an additional $3 million in private philanthropy that's supporting this effort and a little over a million left to go. But we do have all of the funds secured for acquiring a hotel this year. It's actually much, much more cost-effective than leasing hotels, as you can imagine. And also have all of the funds raised for the support of the program with the approval of these funds. So, this will help to ensure that this program can take place this year, that will launch in January. And as you know, it's already, it's already getting cold out there, although this week is somewhat untypical. We know that last year, not only did we serve the most vulnerable of our population, we helped reduce that density and prevent potential COVID outbreaks in shelters, but also saved lives with the cold winter months that we were able to serve for families and individuals who otherwise wouldn't have had a place to be.
And then I think I can add also that some interesting statistics that we found helpful. Across the United States, 70% of the, of the homeless population had either a severe mental health illness or a diagnosis. And so, we know that if we can start to impact that, you all had passed the resolution on how to spend ARPA money, making sure that there is a mental health component. And so, that's really important to bring up. And then I think the other important thing to bring up, to Meredith's point, is that we didn't have any COVID outbreaks or deaths associated with the people that we housed in the non-congregate shelter. We followed a really beautiful playbook that UNMC provided for us. We brought them in to consult and we'll be using that again this winter.
And then can you speak a little bit more to the, the specific programs that you're, that you're providing?
Sure, so last year, we partnered with a couple of different agencies, a couple of different nonprofits, to provide both onsite case management and then also for the operation of the day-to-day happenings at the hotel. This year, we're going to be relying on one nonprofit partner to do both. In the case management piece, what's really beautiful is that there's a tether to the case management that people might already be experiencing with different agency connections. And so, like you had mentioned, being able to expand the opportunity to get documents, birth certificates, identification, and then making that connection to either jobs or what other kind of health and mental health care that they might need, we can provide that connection and those relationships onsite.
Very good. I think what, what really drew me to this organization was the fact that it seemed like they were thinking of the details. And so, I think that, that's a big part. It's not just providing a housing type of situation, it's more like, how do we keep these folks from, from needing to be housed in the future? What can you do to give them a step up? You're providing the boot so they can pull themselves up by their bootstraps. And so, that's, that's why I thought it'd be a, a good organization to fund. So, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The last thing, if I can add, just have 30 seconds more. We're really intentional also, as we look at this building, bringing in opportunities to make sure that there's accessibility, to make sure that there's trauma-informed design in the way that we do the necessary renovations to make sure that we have not only ADA compliance, but so that anyone who's a mobility age user or wheelchair user has, you know, the same equity of access to the building. So, we're excited about that, thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you very much. I also wanna commend Commissioner Boyle for bringing this forward and really continuing more than 40 years of what her family has been doing for so long, and that's caring about others. And I really commend you for that and I know your mom and dad are watching you and proud of you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, there are no other lights, but congratulations and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And the next item is the write-off on non-collectible account receivables at the youth center. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now move to the Human Resources, the weekly personnel report as presented, and then legislative items. I will just note that Marcos and I were at the Nebraska Association of Counties Annual Meeting this past week. And there was a lot of talk about getting geared up to protect our inheritance tax. That was really the number one and it was talked about almost in every meeting that we had in terms of legislative issues. And so we'll be keeping a watchful eye on that. Next is the discussion action on the Douglas County Board District's proposed redistricting map. And Mike Shonlow is here. But I would like to thank the board for the good process in which this took place and the excellent work that Mike Shonlow did after input from all of the commissioners and, again, making sure that we were within the numbers. And we actually, I think, exceeded, Mike exceeded our expectations of what those numbers look like. And so I don't know if we can draw up the map on the thing here, just so people can see it. Hi, Mike.
Just need a browser. Perfect.
Let me share the screen. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead and start pulling it up.
After it's free, then we can approve it today if everybody wants to.
I wasn't done, sorry. There you go. Okay.
In order to share it, I have to, yeah.
Oh, we gotta share it with them too?
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, Mike Shonlow, Douglas County GIS Administrator. Here's the overall map. Let me get it centered here a little bit. Oops.
It's perfect.
Okay. Well, I'm open to any questions regarding the plan. I don't know if you have a printed copy. I think I provided a printed copy, so.
We do have a printed copy. And again, I just want to point out the work that you did, Mike. It was really, really good, keeping the districts as they are, if you will, and then making sure that the numbers of residents, which this year, we have to reach 83,504 in each one of the seven districts. And, I mean, really honest, the percentages that you came up with on the difference, the deviation, are absolutely phenomenal, so just really, really good job, I want to say that.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's really credit to the board members for being very cooperative, easy to work with during this process. And, you know, I think we set out with a goal of, you know, following the law and trying to get those populations as equal as possible and also following the newly drawn election precinct lines. And I think we accomplished both with this plan and we are within 2% of our population target for every district. So I think that's, to be, you know, it's commendable for everyone involved in the process, so.
Absolutely, well, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Mike, I just want to echo what Commissioner Borgeson said. Really thank you. I know I've talked to you a number of times and I really appreciate the good job you've done. And I think for the citizens, it's worth mentioning. I think we haven't had much growth in the inner city, but we really kind of saw it in the last 10 years of the increase in population in our inner city, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. I mean, the demographics changed this decennial census versus the last one and we've seen growth, obviously, in the areas of sprawl, suburban sprawl. But in this case, we also saw growth in the eastern, in the eastern part of the county and the urban core, some density, but also redevelopment, you know, areas like the Blackstone and things like that and other developments in the eastern part of the county, so.
Yeah, because before, we were just seeing that loss and it was a continuous kind of cycle. And now we're seeing it go the other way and that's real positive. And I think, you know, we owe it to a lot of developers and others that have worked to do that kind of thing in the city.
Right.
Planning board and so on. So I think that's positive. But again, thank you for the work you do because it's not easy to get it and not chop it all up, so.
Right, right.
Good job.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Larry? Larry?
I wanted to comment previous.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, with that, there are no other questions or comments. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Well, I guess we could have adjourned with that. We could have added adjournment.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We don't have the need for executive session.
Got a hand up?
I don't see, I have the.
Oh.
Oh, Mr., is it Blake? I can't read. Scott Blake?
Yeah, I just had a few comments about the redistricting, if I could.
Sure.
Great, it's only four quick points. Thanks for allowing me to zoom in.
Sure.
First of all, don't wait until the last minute when redistricting. I know the census was delayed, pushing back the normal schedule, but other political subdivisions like Sarpy County, Ralston City Council, and Metro Community College all finalized their redistricting maps in November. And so second, public input at this point is just a charade. You have to submit the new map to Douglas County by December 30th. Since there is no meeting on December 28th, you can't vote against the new map. You actually already passed it. Can't, could not have laid it over and you couldn't have made any changes. It's too late. And then I had a question about who drew this map. I guess Mike Shonlow. The process could have been more transparent ahead of time. And also, next time, supply a better quality map. The redistricting map in the agenda, in the agenda, is a scan from a print. That's more work for worse quality. I would have loved to have seen that interactive GIS map comparing the two, the old precincts and the new precincts, next time. And then my final point is about re-precincting. I've done some looking of my own and I estimate over 50% of voters in Douglas County will have a new polling place. For example, Commissioner Boyle lives right down the street from me. Did you know our precinct was split into three pieces? Our polling place used to be River of Life, but now we'll both be voting at Emmanuel Lutheran. Precinct lines were redrawn in 2012 and a similar situation happened. Former city council member Bangray said, quote, "This was a disaster." The little yellow postcard that Douglas County Elections sends out 45 days before the next election is not good enough. All three election commissioners, Sarpy, Lancaster, and Douglas, admitted in 2012 that people don't read the voter cards. I'm a nerd, I save mine. But Brian Cruz, who was appointed by Pete Ricketts, knows the postcard notification method does not work, but is planning on doing the same thing in 2022. Doing the same thing and expecting different results is absurd. I will end with, we know that changing polling places causes confusion on Election Day and we know this will cause some not to vote. Feels like voter suppression to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, did you have a comment on this?
His was for the legislative issues, he said.
Oh, we're done with the legislative, but it's Christmas, I'll let him go.
Thank you. Backing up just slightly on legislative issues. I was on the state website the other day and they have some new policies for citizen input. No longer will they accept emails and personal letters for testimony on the record. You have to be there in person. So I wonder when our other bodies are going to change their rules. If people cannot comment unless they're here in person, I guess there won't be any citizens commenting on this board. But I would like to ask the city, I mean, the Douglas County Board, right here in River City, to stand up for the citizens, to get together with the county attorney and the Nebraska Attorney General and indeed enforce the Open Meetings Act. But in order to do that, you have to kind of define it, explain it, and how it applies or doesn't apply in the civic halls of Omaha, Nebraska. Because I think a lot of these bodies are misinterpreting it. I won't go through it right now, but I have a copy of the policies of the Omaha School Board that strikes out the words "dealing with citizen comment." That's totally unconstitutional. So I expect my commissioners, since you sort of overrule or represent, Omaha Public Schools operates under your auspices and under the state, to help us enforce that act by encouraging the Omaha Public Schools to change their policies and for the rest of your boards, citizen, public hearing boards, I guess is the phrase, to have uniform rules that are reasonable instead of rules all over the map. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Recording stopped.